So can I get someone to make a, um, I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:02. Can I get someone to make a motion to accept the agenda, please?
I move that you accept the agenda.
Second.
All right, Bernanda and Greg, thank you. All of those, um, in agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have an agenda, thank you. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. Board Let's Talk, I know there was one, you had one yesterday that you answered, Kristin, what was it in regards to? Something?
Um, it was in regards to cross district, um, students from, uh, Otter Valley Middle School, or students from an Otter Valley Elementary School attending Barstow Middle School because they didn't feel ready, ready to take on a big school.
Oh, okay. Cool, all right. Um, is there anyone else here who wants to speak to the board? Okay. All right, um, the only thing I'm, I'm gonna bring up is what we talked at the RNSU Board for Let's Talk, which was in regards to the Abbey Group Food Service Contract. It is up this year. Um, there have been, uh, many complaints regarding the quality, um, and taste of, um, said food, uh, by, especially mostly at, um, Otter Valley, but I believe there's been some also at the elementary schools as well. So I believe there's a committee I'll set up, um, because we are going out to bid for that contract, but, um, keep it in mind, uh, if you hear anything, um, to have them let someone know or use Let's Talk to, uh, address their concerns so that the committee can get those concerns on their radar. Okay? Great. All right, moving on. Uh, one of the things we're gonna be talking tonight about is flexible pathways and ELOs, and I believe, um, Mr. Ruppel is here from Otter Valley to talk about those, so.
Um, so Kristin has, uh, the slides. Kristin, I'll just yell when I, when I want you to, um, change slides. So, uh, I got, my understanding of, of the ask was to do an overview to all the flexible pathways in Abbott Otter Valley. And I will, you can go two slides abruptly, Kristin. I'll go over, uh, kind of, as a state, the, the authorizing legislation and, and policy framework that would build our flexible pathways system from, give you a little bit about what we're currently doing at Otter Valley and then, um, where, some of the work that we anticipate doing in the next year. So I, I think of it as, as three legs, um, three legs that support access to flexible pathways. Proficiency-based education, uh, the, the Act 77, which is flexible pathways law, and a, and a personalized planning process. A lot of the conversation in the state has been about personalized learning plans. I am, I think we're trying to shift that away from the, the plan itself versus the process of educating and learning about opportunities. But if we do this, you know, if we really work on each of these three legs, we're gonna have a system, um, of personalized learning, so all students are, are experiencing different things in school, uh, that connects to their interests and, uh, future, future goals. You can go to the next slide. So how do these, how do these systems work together? I think, you know, if we think about an order here, um, the first thing that we need to do is we need to, to really work to define what it is that we want our students to learn. That's the, the center of proficiency-based education. As we've, the, the dialogue in the state has been about changing transcripts and zero-to-four grading and, and lots of stuff that I think is, is maybe important but also a little bit noisy, but at the core, what we're talking about is what do we want our students to learn by the time they leave our school? Flexible pathways basically means that we need to build systems, we need to build programs that give kids a variety of different experiences while still in high school, and we need to make sure that those experiences are equally, um, challenging and rigorous so that, um, our, our CTE programs are as rigorous as our in-house programs or as rigorous as other partnerships that we have. And then, you know, great, you've got a flexible pathways system, but if students don't know how to access it, or how it might relate to what they wanna do after high school, it's not very good. So for us, the, the third leg is, is making sure that we were able to give students opportunities to, to learn about the, to learn about the pathways and then access them in school, and that sort of personalized learning planning comes in. So I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail about each of these legs, Kristin, starting with proficiency-based learning. And always, you know, the, the kind of bumper sticker line about proficiency-based learning in Vermont is if you get really tight on the what, the how opens up. So if we know what I, what we want our students to learn, there's a variety of different ways to get there. Last year, uh, in, in large part due to the work of Brian Crane, who was a PDL coach at Otter Valley at the time, um, the teacher leaders developed A Portrait of a Graduate, which was the, basically the transferable skills that, that we want all of our students to achieve. Now, a next phase of that work is connecting those skills to programming at Otter Valley. So where, you know, if, if one of those skills is to engage in a democratic society, where in, in students' experiences are they able to get that? This year, we're, we're working hard, uh, that within our courses, we're really clear on the learning targets that, that we're working towards. And teachers are, are, in, in different departments are, are working on, um, developing those. We're also working on assessment clarity, um, so that means that within each course, we're really clear about what our assessments are. So if, uh, if I have different teachers, I'll teach English nine, right, that we're getting consistent about what we expect of students from what projects and tests and such they're working on. Yeah, you can move on, Kristin. For next year, um, once we've defined those course outcomes, so if we agree what it means to take English nine at Otter Valley, we agree with the fundamental learning of that is, that creates the ability to link in other pathways to that. So it doesn't necessarily have to be that I took English nine at Otter Valley to earn that credit. If we know, if we know the, the essential learning, other pathways can get us there. Also, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of work in, in the high school in particular about, in the area of grading and assessment reform, um, and asking teachers to really be thoughtful about when they're, when they're giving students something and grading it, what exactly are they grading for? Are they separating the knowledge of content that students have, um, from their habits of work? So that those are both important, and we don't wanna just kind of mush them together and call it a 74 or whatever. Um, and then I, I spoke a little bit about consistent assessments, that's ongoing work at Otter Valley. Flexible pathways, when you're ready, Kristin? I think something that, as, as I've gotten into the work here at Otter Valley, uh, there's been a lot done, um, to support a number of different pathways for, for students in their time. Some are in-house, uh, you know, those are things like our MOOSE program, which gets kids academic credit, TechEd, um, others. We are working on developing an alternative program. You all supported, uh, us doing some bidding for the modular unit, um, which, it, it, part of the, the rationale for that is to have an in-house alternative program on the Otter Valley campus. I'll talk a little bit more about these in a bit, but we also have a, a pretty robust system of extended learning opportunities, ELOs, internships, and we're developing our work-based learning program. So those are things that we offer at Otter Valley. We also have a number of different partnerships, um, which are, come in part from the state legislation, but then there's also significant work that we need to do to work with those partners. So most folks are aware of, of our partnerships with Career and TechEd, our students are able to go to Stafford, um, on a full-day basis, or Hanaford for a couple of programs on a half-day basis, um, programs that are offered at Hanaford that are not offered at Stafford. We have online learning, students are able to take courses through VTVLC. And we, we provide VTVLC with a part-time teacher, she teaches a course at VTVLC that opens up several seats for our students. So that gives students access to coursework not available at Otter Valley, or coursework that is available but doesn't fit in their schedules. It also has the, the benefit of, of any time learning, um, so if a student has certain responsibilities that prevent them from learning at 7:30 or whenever the course is offered, they're able to do it on their, on a more flexible schedule. High school completion program, our partner for that is Vermont Adult Learning. That is for students, two, two different, two different pathways there. Some students fully unenroll from Otter Valley and do high school completion on their own. We work with them to make sure that the work they're doing at Val lines up with our requirements at Otter Valley, um, to issue them a diploma. That can be students from age 16 to age 70. Anyone, anybody who's attended Otter Valley is able to, when they engage with Vermont Adult Learning, to work towards that credential. There's also students who are co-enrolled, um, so those students are, um, able to take some programming with us and some programming with Vermont Adult Learning. There's certain testing requirements that, that, um, that open up that gate towards co-enrollment. Early college and dual enrollment are, are sort of similar, but they're, they're not quite the same. Again, state law allows any student in their senior year to apply for free early college at a number of different Vermont colleges. We work with wherever they enroll, I think most of ours are currently at Castleton. We work to coordinate the credits that they're earning at the college with, um, with our graduation requirements, so students graduate with both high school and, or students graduate from Otter Valley at the end of their senior year having earned credits in college. The state also provides all students with two dual enrollment vouchers, which allow them to take coursework for free, um, at local colleges. A lot of our students will do online courses there.
Recording in progress.
Okay. All right, uh, you can click ahead when you're ready, Kristin? ELOs, I think I was asked to talk in particular about it, sounds like the board had some questions about what those are. Our ELO program is run by Lisa King, who also teaches business courses, uh, and it's, it's pretty impressive, the, the variety of things that students are able to do. We have two kind of components of that, one is, is more of the, the project-based experience. So we have students working, uh, at the Hatchery in Pittsburgh, um, on stream ecology and earning science credit for that. Some students took a, or a student took a Governor's Institute experience, um, and wanted to continue that work. I think that was in the area of civic engagement, so they did some summer programming, they wanna learn more about it, so they're working with Lisa to, um, do some independent work, and they'll present their learning to the school at some point. We had a student who wanted to, he, he's interested in photography, wanted to pursue an art credit, um, so is, is kind of doing an independent study in photography. The idea is in ELOs, they're, they're, they're driven by the student, the student works with Lisa to come up with the plan, and then they come back and they present to a panel at the school. Lisa's in the process of scheduling those for her first semester, which I'm pretty excited about. We also have a number of students, I think about 12 this semester, that are on internships. So those are for credit, um, students are, are evaluated in that internship, um, and those are just a few examples of where students are doing those. So, um, I think definitely a source of pride in Otter Valley that we have so many different opportunities for students. A challenge in the internship realm is that our students generally fund their own transportation there, so it tends to be, it's not something that we have equitable access to, although that part of the rationale for adding the work-based learning coordinator is so that more students can access that kind of work experience while still in high school. And then I'll do personalized learning quickly, um, so that we can hopefully have time for questions. So our students do complete a PLP, um, that gets started in seventh grade, and then they add to it each year. Currently, at the end of, um, 10th grade, that will include those things that I list there, value strengths, academic goals, and post-secondary goals. In the grade eight ELA course, our English course, they do a PLP mini-unit where they complete their slides, um, they work on making sure that they're grammatically correct, formatted well, and, and look professional. In grade 10, we have a careers unit in our Lit 10 class that all students take, um, where they complete like a research project on a career they're interested in, present it to their classmates. And then, as students sign up for their senior year of courses towards the end of grade 11, each student will have an individual meeting with their school counselor, um, to make sure that the things that are on their high school experience line up with post-secondary plans. Definitely doing some work here that I, uh, Kristin, if you, I think my last slide. So Devin Karpak is, as most of you know, is currently on a Roland Fellowship. The project that he's working on there is the Career Pathways Program, um, which is gonna include lots of like exploratory work in 7th and 8th grade, and I think in the current iteration, what, what we're thinking is students will apply to the Career Pathways Program at the end of 8th grade, and that will include, um, other significant programming that they get throughout their time, things like resume building, um, opportunities to do job shadows. We're, we're, we have a lot to work out in how that will work, but the idea is that students who know that they're interested in finding a career right after high school can apply to that Career Pathways Program. And it's like an extra layer of, of guidance through that process. And I think what we're trying to think through is what is the, what's the carrot or the incentive for a 14-year-old student to sign up for what sounds like extra work? So how, how do we kind of incentivize that for, for our students? We're thinking about like credit substitutions and giving kids credit for participation in the Career Pathways Program, that sort of thing. Can you go back, Kristin? Unless you're giving me the, uh, the hug. I'm, I'm super excited that we're adding, um, a 7th grade STEM course and adding world language into 7th grade, starting that, that work in flexible pathways earlier. You know, we know that students make decisions about their interest in school, not when, about whether they wanna graduate, those decisions are not often made in 10th and 11th grade, those decisions are made much earlier. We wanna push resources into 7th and 8th grade to engage kids at school. We're working on a procedure to make sure that students are, students that, that wanna access flexible pathways are clearly reflecting that in their PLP so that it's a, it's not, it's not like a willy-nilly, I think I'll try this, we want, we want kids to know how what they're about to do relates to their, um, to their goals and interests. So in general, we'll, we'll be asking more students who are trying to access a flexible pathway to have that reflected in their PLP. Currently, we do that for Stafford, we do it for early college, we're trying to grow the number of, of opportunities that students need to tie their PLP into. And then just a, a longer-term goal that I have is, is to continue to work, especially in the high school advisory program, to have the advisor be a, um, be somebody who can guide students through flexible pathways, through their personalized learning planning process, can be an advisor about what, what kinds of courses to take, so that it's not just running through the counseling office, but all adults at OB are supporting kids in, in their pathway. So, that's what I have for you. I'm here for any questions.
I think there's one. Is there something in the chat?
Will there, these options be available for students that need alternative options rather than a standard day at OB?
Yeah, so that's, there's degrees of that. Our vision behind the alternative program that we're building is that students are, are, basically that becomes their academic program, is, is, say, three hours in the building and then they're off doing different things in the afternoon, some students doing additional coursework in the building. You know, we are challenged by the credit system that we have, students need to earn a certain number of credits to graduate, but the more we develop the flexible pathway system, the less it is, I'm gonna be at Otter Valley from 8 until 2:30, um, every day for four years. We see more of that in the upper grades now, where students are engaging in internships, you know, or maybe late, um, because they're at an internship in the morning or an internship in the afternoon. But we'd like that to be more flexible across our student experience, but that's challenging when you have the credit system that's working. So it's a goal, um, but it's, we'll see, if we're doing this right, we'll see more students moving in a direction of, of a more hybrid schedule.
Go ahead, Greg.
Two questions, one, you mentioned at the end of 8th grade, they all decide possibly then, so is it a four-year thing, the flexible pathways? And then, two, what about kids who might not fully know that at 8th grade, but maybe at the end of 9th or 10th grade, do they have the option still to merge into this?
So you're talking about the Career Pathways Program?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, flexible pathways are open to any Otter Valley?
Yeah, yeah, I meant the career.
But that, that program? Yeah, so that's an ongoing dialogue. You know, the, we, we wanna make sure that we provide students with a clearly articulated program, and the goal that Devin and I share is that if you're in this program, we wanna be reasonably certain that when you walk out as a, as a 12th grade student, you're, you're walking into a job. So there's benefits to four-year programming there. We do also foresee, um, points where students can enter, although that means that they're not getting the, the full experience. We also know within that Career Pathways Program that the direction may be that students go through some of the work for two years, many of them will choose to go to Stafford or Hanaford, like that will be a key partner in that work. But some students may engage in different kinds of programming at Otter Valley. But yeah, that, the, the vision is that primarily we're getting those students across four years, but we would imagine that some students will enter later.
Kevin, did you have?
Yeah, we, we spoke briefly about this in the summer, um, the problem of, um, kids wanting to do internships, say, let's say, at the Fish Hatchery, but they need an English credit or nutrition or a gym or something, and then, then that's only available in fourth block, that prevents them from, um, from doing the internship they want. Is that, are you making progress in resolving that? Is that a state-level issue or that, uh, we can't avoid, or is it something we can do internally?
So I think there's, there's different layers of control there. So the state doesn't, in very few cases, will say that student, actually, no cases will say, say that students need X amount of credits in this discipline. The state will certainly not say that all students need to take English 11. Those are local decisions that we make. When I talk about articulating outcomes, right, I think that's a really important way, that it's possible that if the student needs that English credit and they're at the Fish Hatchery, can we tie in the, the essential learning from an English 12 course into that internship experience? That's a place where online learning can, can be helpful too, so because you, you wanna go to the Fish, Fish Hatchery at 1 o'clock every day and your internship runs 1 to 4, but we really wanna incorporate a PE course, can we find something online you can take? So the, developing a proficiency-based system, I would say, is our biggest inroad to that, because right now, it's, it's, we don't have a clearly articulated set of requirements in, say, English 11 that are then transferable to different kinds of experiences. And we're not there yet, it's, it's ongoing work.
Bernanda?
Who guides the students in this process of planning and when in their, in their day do they do that work?
So it mostly happens through our advisory program. The, you mean the PLP?
The PLP process and any mentoring they might require to make decisions.
Yeah, so the, the goal is that the advisor is somebody who supports that. Advisors are, um, expected to support students each year in revising their PLP. All students also have access to a school counselor, although that's, not every student sees, like meets with their counselor every year to go over coursework, the numbers just don't permit that. So we expect our advisors to have a role, but I think the biggest thing is classroom teachers can, like, I know that this student was super interested in such-and-such unit that we did, and I can connect them to pathways. So classroom teachers have an important role. We think the advisor is the, like, the, the front lines of, of helping students navigate their pathways.
Other questions?
This is more common than a question, this, it's an incredibly important book called The, uh, we've got the cumbersome title of The Intellectual Life of the British Working Classes, um, that's, um, that's extremely moving, and it's about how people who have no money and work manual labor 12 hours a day and are illiterate and have never seen a book in their lives, created intellectualized for themselves. And one of the lessons of that book, in my opinion, is that once human minds are engaged in anything that they, uh, attracts them and that they love, so many other things will follow. So, um, I understand the schools' need to make sure that, you know, Otter Valley graduates have a certain amount of set skills, but I would also trust people that, that if they fall in love with the Fish Hatchery, they might be inclined to learn statistics later on in life because it helps them, uh, and to be, to be aware of that and, um, just keep it in mind as you go move forward.
Couldn't agree more. I mean, I had a similar conversation today about, you know, if we can, if we can find the spark early on, um, a student may be more willing to sit through Algebra II because they know that it's gonna get them into this college, they can do this thing that they got super passionate about. And, yeah, we can create learning through the things that kids wanna, like you design around the kid versus designing the curriculum. And that's hard, it's a, it's a, it's a shift from the way that we generally think about our work in, in education, um, but I, I think it's important and I, I couldn't agree more from a philosophical lens.
Other questions for Mr. Ruppel? Okay? Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Michael, have fun at your kid event.
Yeah, it's, turns out that's next week, we gotta schedule it and mix it up.
All right, so the next thing, um, was, that was tabled from our December meeting, was the download of the Listen Up, um, and so hopefully you guys got to look at it. But we wanted to have a discussion regarding Listen Up and, um, maybe what you saw or what you thought from that, I believe is how we, we looked at that, correct, Kristin? So did everybody get to watch it?
I didn't re-watch it.
No, I know, it's, it's very powerful.
I actually meant to and I, and I regretfully did not, so I'm gonna need to have some refresh, refreshment, refreshing.
Refreshing stuff, how about everyone else?
It was very powerful.
You've seen, that's right, you have seen it, we saw it together. Um, Jeremy, were you able to see it?
No, I didn't watch it, I did read through the, like, lists.
Okay. And Greg, were you able to see it?
I watched some of it.
Some of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Eric, what about you?
I did see some of it, yes.
Okay, so I think there's enough of us that have seen parts of it, um, that we can at least have a discussion, um, about it. Not to put you on the spot, Kristin, but can you just go over the person who put it together and, um, you know, why they put it together, I guess is, and then maybe we can go from there?
Sure, absolutely. So the, the, um, the video is from the Listen Up Project, um, and so basically it was an original musical that was inspired, written, and performed by Vermont teens, including some from the Otter Valley Union School District, um, and they were able to tour the state in 2021. So again, it's based upon interviews, workshops, conversations with kids who were the actors, but also, um, including listening sessions with more than 800 12- to 18-year-olds across Vermont. 18-year-olds across Vermont. So again, at, at that point. So they came up with a script. Then they produced a streaming film version of the musical. They also did some live performances. And it is now available for schools, youth centers, teachers, parents, and teens. It also provides an opportunity for folks that they're interested to do screenings that might include working with the director or some of the student actors to do some, some Q and As. And I think it was Jeremy who said he took a look at the list of demands. They also created a list of things that all Vermont teens want adults to know.
Is there a possibility of putting that up on the screen, what their list of demands were?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll open this up to everyone. But I guess, I thought it was a very deep and, and moving presentation from our kids, from kids across the state stating, you know, what it means to be a, a Vermont teen right now and, and that they want all of us to listen to what they have to say. And so what is up on the screen right now is the list of demands that they came up with, the actors in the, in the film. And I think it's just very important that we, as school board members, realize that, you know, we did have one student who was in that and who helped create this from our own hometowns. And that maybe we need to listen to this and see how we can incorporate it in our own, our own schools. So what did you guys think of it? The parts you remember, the parts that you, you saw? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was taken by the, by the candid nature of the students talking and performing. But it was clear that there was intended messages for people like me. And it, it, it was very educational. It really helped me get current in a hurry with adolescent issues. I think they really nailed it in terms of current events. And I, I think it's important for people to hear from them as students. And I think that the idea of having a student advisory group that is a recent development this year is, is really important. And I think that their voice needs to be listened to carefully. I was impressed. I was very impressed. Well done.
Yeah, go ahead, Barbara.
I mean, I'm, I'm remembering how deeply moved I was by the film and, and like Derek said, impressed with the candid nature and the sort of vulnerability. The kids are willing to put themselves out there on camera for people to see them and their concerns. And then in the list that, this list that's here, the broad range, the, the diversity of requests, that it isn't, there's no one specific thing. They seem to be across, I mean, across all lines. There's demands in so many different areas. And that's, it's hopeful because it's guidance in a whole bunch of different areas that we, we already think we need to look at. So it's things like family farms and LGBTQ and BIPOC and emotional, social emotional well-being. I mean, we talk about these things and it's where they're wanting us to focus. So that seems hopeful, that we have been directing ourselves in some of those directions. And this maybe offers some clarity to where we can go.
But when I look at this list, all I see is that kids want to feel supported, that they want everyone to feel supported, not just them, but everyone. And I think it's important that in our work, that we try and do as much as we possibly can to provide that at all of our local schools. You know, inexpensive and accessible therapy for all. I'm not exactly sure what that might include, but if we could do that, that would be really great. Because there are lots of times where someone could use a therapy session so that things don't get worse for a student or someone else. Natalie, you said something in the chat, but I, I didn't see it. Can you read it? I saw her name, but I couldn't see what she wrote.
Her microphone isn't working. I can read it, Lori.
Thank you.
I think, I think these are all very important forward-thinking ideas that we should think about. As I said before, education is no longer about academics, but about teaching the whole student. And the list shows the need to move toward that approach.
Yep. Yep. And is there something above that, too? Oh, okay.
It's more about, you know, personal learning plans.
Okay, personal learning plans. Okay, thank you. Very true, Natalie. Very true. Okay. Anybody else from online want to say anything? Well, if there's a way to somehow keep this in the back of our mind when we are putting together new policies or thinking about what we need to be able to offer kids, we need to keep this in the back of our mind at all times. Yeah. Kristin, did you want to say something? Your hand's kind of...
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add kind of to Derek's point. This is the whole reason why student government is so important. The new Student Advisory Council is so important. Mr. Ruppel's presentation earlier in the evening and even the board having a conversation about food service. We'd be arrogant to assume that we know what all of our students need at any given moment in time. We also would be silly of us to assume that what the graduating seniors of 2023 need is going to be exactly the same as what the graduating seniors, you know, three or four years from now. So it's really about taking a look at, for instance, these demands, which our Student Advisory Council is, is looking at in a couple of weeks, figuring out how many of these are true for the students at Otter Valley. How might they adjust some of these? And it's really, you know, hearing our, our students say, what do we do well? And what do we need for our adults to do better? To make sure that we, again, student government, give them opportunities to plan, design, and prioritize alongside us.
Great. Cool. All right. Well, if there's no other discussion, we will move on. But if you, yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask a question? How many of the students do you think have seen the movie?
Here in, at Otter Valley? Um, I would think not as many as probably should. We did talk about having a viewing at Otter Valley, and I just don't know that that's actually come to fruition. I'm sure it probably got put on the back burner at some point. But we could do something in the auditorium.
That's what I wondered. I wondered if it would be good for adults and students together to
Sure.
to have this and have a conversation. Make it local, you know, bring it, bring it to, to them to see if this represents their voice.
Yep. I would, I would probably ask the student council, actually, if they would like to have a viewing. Or talk to your student advisory board if they would like to have one, and we can make it happen.
And so the Student Advisory Council got the link to the video, the January 3rd. So they will have an opportunity to all have watched it. And then when they come back in two weeks, the kind of so what piece is next? And they're, the Student Advisory Coordinator, Allison Callahan, is also on the Student Advisory Council, our committee with us. So they might make a recommendation, for instance, to Mr. Ruppel that they show part of the video in advisory. So we'll, again, give the Student Advisory Council the opportunity to make recommendations about what we do, if anything, with the film.
Cool. All right. Thank you. That's great.
Is there a difference between student advisory council and, student advisory board and student council?
Yes.
Yes. So the student council are representatives that are elected officials that serve to take a look at O V-centric issues, things that are happening in the building, places that they want to make changes. The Student Advisory Council to the superintendent is a different group of students. It's open. Every month it sort of changes. We have the same core crew, but they're always encouraged to bring friends. We try to get students who maybe don't participate in other places of student government, but sometimes that doesn't always happen. And that group is tasked with specifically talking about not only their experience at Otter Valley, but O V as a whole. So we do talk about what was their experience like at Nashobee. A lot of them have siblings in the elementary schools as well. So we try to have that be a little bit more global. And then it is our hope that next year, we potentially grow it to include some Barstow students and some upper elementary students at our elementary schools at least a few times a year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So if there's no other questions, it sounds like we have a plan for our Student Advisory Group to get that together. We will move on to our facilities discussion. Kristin, do you want to give us a modular unit update?
Sure, there are no modulators. Yeah, so the O V one is waiting. They're in the bid process. The one at Otter Creek is fully in, is fully functional. They even have some folks that go in there. They have some of their equipment and stuff that's going over. They did their final water testing. They're simply waiting for the results of the water testing to be able to put students in it. So it's fully functional, waiting for the final testing from the state. Nashobee is also super close, but a little bit behind O C A. They're waiting for their water testing and their final electric, electrical panels. And then they'll be good to go.
Okay. And the sidewalk, any questions regarding those? Sorry, I don't mean to just fly ahead. Okay. Sidewalk project, V Trans grant awarded to Lowthrip for Safe Roots to School.
Yeah, super exciting. And Debbie's there if Debbie wants to chat briefly.
Sure.
I can, if you'd like, Kristin.
Sure, Debbie.
So Melanie Parker, our school nurse, has been a real champion just about, just Safe Roots to School. And she, I believe it was about 10 years ago, wrote a plan for Safe Roots for Schools with V Trans. And the idea is of the sidewalks on Route 7, some crossings, I believe, that were down near, oh goodness, the road that goes to the rec. For, you know, planning.
Plains Road?
No, Furnace Road.
Furnace Road, yeah.
Furnace Road. So just sort of that whole area. I'm thinking about our walkers. And it was a really well-done plan. And most recently, the Rutland Planning Commission actually looked, dug up all of those old plans because they had some, some money for some different types of sidewalks and things like that. And because her plan was so well-done, they actually came and said to us, what would you like done? So we, I know, right? This like never happens. And so we had already identified our entrance sidewalks as needing some care. And so the plan was approved, the grant was approved. And so Brenda's thrilled about this. There's, there are no funds or paperwork or anything that goes through, through the business office or anything. It's done in connection with V Trans and the town of Pittsburgh. So that they'll be connecting with them soon and that work should start in the spring. So that's really exciting.
Nice.
That's awesome.
So do you have that plan? Or is that plan something that is accessible by anyone to look at? Or?
I can, I, I saw like the draft grant.
Okay.
Because they were asked, they were on a short timeline. They were getting our information. But I can get that for the board, though.
I was just curious as to where the crosswalks would be and, and all of that.
So for us, it's going to be a lot of the, so the initial Safe Roots to School plan was just that they were impressed with how comprehensive that was. That's not actually all that's going to be getting fixed. Or not, that is not what's going to be done. It's actually, they wrote a different plan for what we needed on our campus. So the sidewalks as you walk right out of the building.
Okay.
And then also an opening when you cross from, well, the, actually, right out here and you go over to the town hall building, to the gym and cafeteria. There is not a handicap accessible space to get off from the sidewalk there. So I believe they'll be opening that up so that you can go right out the one, two door and straight over to the, over to the gym and the cafeteria.
Oh, great.
So, so all of the work is on our campus. It's not going to be sort of the sidewalks on Route 7.
Okay.
So, thanks for asking that for clarity.
Yeah, no, no problem. Thank you. Awesome. Other questions for Debbie regarding that project? Very exciting. Cool. All right. We are on to finalize.
Well, we're on the subject of, of facilities in general. I sent a link to most of you today to a YouTube video called Male Inequality Explained by an Expert, a guy named Richard Reeves, who's at the Brookings Foundation, and has just written a book about that. Since that wasn't on the public record, I wanted to make sure it's on the public record. Reeves does a very good job of, a better job than I've been doing apparently of explaining why I've been pushing so hard for CTE funding. And when we have the facilities discussion about spending facilities money, I'm going to be pushing for it again. So please take a look at it. It's 15 minutes long and tells a lot about the, the situation of boys and men in America today, particularly working-class boys and, and men. Thank you.
Can you send it to me?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. We need to finalize our budget communication plan. One of the things that should have been in our packet, and I didn't look, was the first postcard that we prepared, Melinda prepared, to send out, which is mainly just to make sure that people know that they have to vote and how to get absentee ballot. Doesn't talk about our budget at all. It's just to make sure that people know how to access, how to get a ballot. And then in the next two weeks, we want to have a postcard that goes out that talks specifically about our budget. So that people, when they vote, will be informed as to the particulars around our, our budget. What else did we need to do? I see that Devin Fuller already wrote something and put it in the reporter. And Derek, did you?
Last week.
Last week? Yours was in the reporter last week? So we're getting information out about the budget. But it's important that we keep talking to people and explaining what I call the roller coaster, which is the fact that our expenditures have increased by 6.46%, but our equalized, our unified tax rate is going down because of the new...
Common level appraisal?
Nope. It's the other one. It's the yield. Because the yield has increased so much, our tax rate is going, our unified tax rate is going down. But yet, because of common level of appraisal, everybody's tax rate is going up. So that's hard to understand in a lot of ways. So we need to make sure that we start using ways to let everybody understand how that happened and, and why.
Be happy to when I understand it. Can, can we just give a kind of bottom-line figure to voters? I don't think that the yo-yo is going to, um...
It's hard to do.
Well, as far as the bottom line, I think you could tell everybody that if you look at the item that Brenda gave, that taxes are going up by five cents in most towns and 15 cents in Lester and Pittsburgh, I believe, were the two that were most affected because their CLAs have dropped the most. because their CLAs have dropped the most. Everybody else's were roughly the same. That is the bottom line, is that taxes will go up by five cents. However, I will skip ahead a little bit. Pittsburgh has written a letter of appeal to the P V R, which is the, I don't remember what the acronym is, but essentially, they are saying that their C L A has been dropped significantly due to something that has, not in a commonality, but one of those... What's the thing where...
Outlier?
Yeah, it's a complete outlier. There you go. They have an outlier. Thank you. I knew it was something like that. And so they are waiting to hear back from the P V R to hear whether or not their appeal has been approved so that their C L A would actually not be as detrimental as it is right now to them. So is there anything else we should talk about regarding our budget? Oh, that's what I want to talk about with our budget communication plan, is what exactly you want to see on the postcard. Melinda and I talked about it a little bit, but I wanted to verify with you guys what you want it to say. Anything? I don't know that we want to just say your tax rate's going up five cents or 15 cents if you live in Pittsburgh or Lester. I think they need to know a little bit more than that. We can talk about the fact that, of course, most of the budget is salaries and benefits. We did pass... We did have negotiations with teachers and parents and bus drivers that...
They approved a contract?
Right. Those contracts have been approved, and those are in the budget. So that's causing part of our increase. Other than that, I'm trying to think if there's anything else that we really need to point out that's a big driver. Anything you can think of, Kristin? As far as... If there's one I...
Yeah, the only thing I'll say is that separate from what the board is considering for the postcard, we're also working, I said this last meeting, to do... We're meeting with all of our school faculties, who are an awful lot of our voters in many of our towns. And we're also creating information to go out on the webpage, and we'll also have a video. This is a document that we are crafting that breaks down the budget in terms of here's where our dollars are going, right? So this amount, 75%, is going to teaching and teaching support. School and central office admin is around 10%, which is actually a decline from last year. So we're looking at both giving them the figure and also looking at Brenda's, here's, you know, the percentage. But we're also looking at breaking it down by categories so they can see some of these.
Pass this on, budget communication ideas.
And then the only other thing I would say, Lori, is I'm not sure if folks saw it in the school board association announcement, but they are fast-tracking a bill to suspend the school district budget approval language. It's in Law 42. It did already pass the House, although we're not totally sure that it'll be approved by the legislature. But it is the hope that it will, so it won't help our warning. But it could help a last-minute push with postcards. So it would basically suspend the requirement for that mandatory specified school district budget ballot language that Brenda talked about last time. We can't just say, here's our increase, and here's the tax rate. We have to say, here is the per pupil equalized spending increase, which is about like 9.7%. So we probably won't be able to change our warning, but we can amend the language on postcards.
Okay. So I will work on Melinda to figure out what we're going to say for postcards, unless there's something specific that you really want to make sure is on there. And you're right, this is a great article from the Mountain Times. Killington top state for undervalued grand list. Recent C L A assessment to push education tax rate up for most. That's exactly what happened in our district as well. So CLAs.
Some good language there.
Yeah, so I'll look at that. Okay. Yeah, thank you. All right, we just talked about the Pittsburgh letter of appeal. Did anybody have any questions regarding that?
When will they find out?
It's two weeks from when they appealed, which was last week. So maybe sometime next week, we might know. End of January. Could take them longer, but that's what I've heard. Okay. Board candidate info session. The only one who showed up was Brett. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Comment, question about the budget communication plan?
Yeah.
My question is, can we ask a question to the voters that's accompanying the budget vote?
Not now, because the budget, everything is already set and gone to the printers. And so we would have had to have done that at last meeting or prior to that. And we've talked about asking voters questions, and we've always said no. What was our reason? We end up not asking questions of our voters mainly because, what was the, can you remember the reason, Kristin? Because we've talked about it before, and then we never do it. Jean always had an answer. I think it's, a lot of it is, is that everything gets commingled for our vote. And so to determine that question on the vote, I think that's part of the reason. But I can't remember exactly. But if you wanted to ask a question on the ballot, you have to do that at the same time you do the warning, things like that.
For next year, I've always thought it'd be interesting to have just like a simple question. It wouldn't matter how it's commingled.
Sure.
Do you think this budget is too high, too low, or the right amount? Because I feel like budgets get passed, and then everyone's just scrambling to guess why they fail without really having a very fundamental basis of... Like, I have voted against the budget before because I thought it was too low.
Okay.
And I don't think that's ever the assumption, and I wonder how many other people are voting that same way. And then I've talked to people who were on the board during times I have voted no for the budget because I thought it was too low, where the response was, oh, the budget didn't pass, so we're looking what to cut. The assumption is always, we're spending too much money and we have to cut things. And I would just like, I feel like it would be useful for all of us to get a handle on, is that an accurate assumption or not? Because I think that is the common assumption.
Okay.
Which I wish I said last week.
I guess so, yes. All right. Board candidate info session. The only one who came was Brett. I didn't even make it.
I would say that all of the interested candidates that came to the meeting, I feel like they walked away with all their questions answered. So I think that's the real takeaway here.
Awesome. Well, I'm glad to hear that. All right.
But we do have an interested candidate sitting in the room there, so...
Yeah, do you want to introduce him?
I can't. I can't see anything or anybody.
That's all right, but you can introduce.
Yeah, Paul Lathrop is sitting there, and he can probably tell you a little bit more about himself. But Paul's unfortunately co-V P with myself on the Lothrup P T O. So why he would want to spend any more time around me, I'm unsure, but maybe he can answer that as well.
Well, he doesn't have to answer it to us so much as he has to answer it to the voters because we don't get to appoint him like we appointed you. So, but if you're definitely interested in running, you should get your petition by January 30th to your local town clerk here in Pittsburgh. And if you have any questions, you're more than free to contact any of us on the board or the administration if you have any questions. Okay. Thank you. So for everybody else, if you are running again, your petition must be into your town clerk by January 30th with the correct number of signatures on it. They must be valid signatures. So if you think you only need 10, get 15 or 20, just in case somebody said, oh yeah, I'm a registered voter, and they're not. Happens all the time. So those need to be in by January 30th. If you know of people who are interested in running, please urge them to run as well. Let's see, our annual work plan, it is what it is. Mostly what we're going to be doing next month is looking at some more policies. We're going to be talking about budgets again before our vote. And then we will be reorganizing in March. Let's see. So some dates to remember. Wednesday, February 1st is our next meeting at 6 o'clock at Otter Valley. And I'm also going to tell you that our next meeting after that, Wednesday, February 15th, is not going to be at O C A. It is going to be at Otter Valley as well. We have been to all of the local schools, so we don't really need to go around and do it again until next fall. And the other thing before I let you go is that in the last couple of weeks, there's been lots of emails sent out to all board members by select board members trying to get some feedback on a letter that they're proposing or a video that they want. And I want to tell you right now that we cannot do that. So it is, it can be seen. I didn't respond to anybody before because it looked like it stopped automatically. But we cannot send something to the whole board because it can look like we are in session when we are not. And we are required to deliberate anything that we do at a meeting. So if there is something that you would like to disseminate to the whole group, you really need to send it to myself and/or Kristin, and we can send it out to everyone. But the problem is, is that if people start responding to each other, then we can get ourselves in some hot water. So I do want to remind the board of that. If there's something that you want brought up in a meeting, you also need to either let Kristin or myself know ahead of time, or it will not be talked about at the next, at that meeting that you're trying to bring it on the board. Okay? Yes, sir?
We have, we have a policy area about agenda building. I think we're going to review that in April, in our April meeting.
Okay.
But I've heard you say a number of times that it's important to respect that five days before the meeting deadline so that stuff can be put on the agenda and so that it could be disseminated.
It really needs to be a week before because we put the agenda together, and Melinda sends it out that Friday. So I mean, if I know about it Thursday and I can get ahold of Melinda before she sends it out, we could potentially add something. But otherwise, the way the agenda is set is the way we're going to talk about it at our meeting. Okay? Okay. Anything else?
Just a process piece. Because I was one of the ones that sent an editorial to some people to get some feedback for accuracy or whatnot. How would I, how would I get feedback without...
Sending it to...
Without that kind of dissemination.
You're sending it on your own behalf, so you're not sending it on behalf of the board. If you were sending it on behalf of the board, we would need to look at it at a board meeting to determine if that's what we want to send out. If you're sending it as an individual and you want to get Jeremy's idea or Kevin's idea on it, you just reach out to them. But you can't send it out to everybody and say, hey, what do you think?
Okay.
Okay?
All right. That helps me understand that better.
All right. Is there any other questions before the board tonight?
Could I get a two-minute tour of the school? I haven't seen the entire school before.
It takes longer than two minutes, but sure. And you might get lost or killed in the sludge.
Yeah, because there are places that you can't get there.
Yes, there is. I've said it many times, and I will continue to say it. So, all right, so then I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:07.
Wow, I see that.
All right, and a second? Nah, we don't need a second. Go. Go. All right.